All right, we should be live on Facebook. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maumell for July 6, 2021. First order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Mazzoni.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow both our country and our city and the success across the country of the Fourth of July celebrations as we celebrate our independence and especially the overwhelming success of the festivities here in Maumell as we emerge from this pandemic. And please give us your wisdom as we try and make good decisions to guide our city today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Would that, in fact, once we've passed it, they by right would have to do something with C2 and do some apartments, they would probably say it was a taking if we tried to pass something like that, would that be true?
Once, I mean, at this point, they have the right to use it as R3 by right if the rezoning goes through the process and you vote for the rezoning. You can't, yes, you couldn't go back and then say, we're going to retroactively apply this new rule to you.
So, does that make sense to you? Is that, okay. So my concern was if perhaps we should go ahead with his motion and do that to put it off, otherwise they would complain that perhaps we were trying to mess with him over there. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yeah, the other advantage of tabling it with Councilmember Shin's is that we'll have, we should have by September, October, we should have some feedback on our updated master land use plan. So we'll now have everyone looking at it and saying, hey, this is, we're now looking at the big picture, where does this type fit in? And we'll have a better long-range data to make a better choice rather than very small data set right now, because there's complicated factors here that'll give us time to look at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mazzoni. Councilmember Gardner?
I'm just trying to do the timeline in my head, if, not on this particular one, but if something were to be run through Planning Commission and they were to approve it in their July meeting, that would come to us as a recommendation of a do or do not pass for the first meeting in August, is that correct? So assuming it's not tabled, it would be voted on by us at the first meeting in September. Would that timeline hold if that's when the new proposal goes to planning?
That's correct. If they did amend the agenda and add it to this agenda in July, then we would vote, you would vote on it at the first, if all timelines proceed normally.
Which that always doesn't happen.
You would vote on it in the first meeting in September, but I've, I mean, I've had the, maybe it could be added, but I have, I do have the agenda for the subcommittee meeting, which is day after tomorrow.
Right.
So.
Okay. It's one of the problems of getting the agenda out early as opposed to when we've historically gotten it out, because we normally pass it out at the first Planning Commission Subcommittee meeting. But nonetheless, yes, okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to table the second reading of ordinance 1028 to the second meeting in October. Is there any additional discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries, ordinance 1028 is tabled to the second meeting in Octo. The next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 1035, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1035, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in the preliminary plat for the development known as the Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24C, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Outstanding. This on the second reading, if there's no discussion, it'll be on the third reading at the next council meeting. All right, we will move on to new business. The first item of new business is Resolution 2021-16, a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2021-16, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for a health education recreation facility in an I-1 industrial park zoning district.
Outstanding. This is a conditional use permit that would allow educational, health education recreational facility in I-1 specifically Creekside Miniature Golf. Y'all should have, it looks like, received a packet on your desk when you arrived. I do have a public comment card, so we'll get to that first. Mr. Philip Munson, come on down, if you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Philip Munson, 134 One Out of Way, Mammell, Arkansas. Good evening, and my name is Philip Munson, my wife Heather, my two kids, Madison and Grant. We are Mammell residents, and we are the full owners of H&amp;M Partners. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us about this conditional use permit up at Creekside Mini Golf at 1800 Murphy Drive. I moved here with my parents in 1993, when they built their first home. I have since built my home here with my family. I worked for a national general contractor for over 21 years. They specialize in commercial construction. I plan on using my contacts and resources to help me build this project. We're excited about the opportunity to build Creekside Mini Golf. We believe we can provide a family entertainment venue for the community. We can provide outdoor entertainment along with options for hosting birthday parties and small events. Mammell is missing option for this type of entertainment. As a father of a teenage daughter and a pre-teen son, we want to keep the entertainment close to home. You know, how many times have any of us traveled outside of Mammell for a birthday party? We can keep some of the families in revenue here by offering them a place to go. I do have a passion for this project, this is important to me because as a kid and adult, I have great memories playing putt-putt near my grandparents' home. The best part of this competition, it does not matter your age or athleticism, anyone has a chance to become the champion of the short game. I want to build a site where the community can create those memories for themselves. I'm gonna do that by designing the course for families who wish to have fun and the serious player that wants to challenge. I'm working with a national company that designs and builds successful courses around the country. The course will have the fill and the theme of a real golf course. The holes will be longer than a typical putt-putt and have sand traps and contours like a putting green. We plan to keep as much natural beauty as possible on this property. I would like to keep large trees shaded and as shade and incorporate them into the course. We hope to target the golfer that doesn't have four hours to play around a golf, but can take an hour to play with their family. The clubhouse design will be around 1,400 square feet. We will have a concession stand in storefront area that will give out putters, they'll drink, snacks, ice cream, and shaved ice. We will have an indoor party room available for rental. There will be a pavilion area with picnic tables and barstools, giving parents a viewing area to watch their kids. Also, this area will be available for birthday parties or events. Our business plan is to have two to three employees and be family-owned and operated. We would have seasonal operation hours ranging from April to November, depending on the weather. Potential hours of operation would be Friday, 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sundays, probably noon to about 8:00. I would offer the entire course for rental during off-peak hours and days. Land at 1800 Murphy Drive gives us the opportunity, unique opportunity, to build a spectacular course. The miniature golf at the site can be profitable because we do not have the large initial land investment. In Mammell, the prices for commercial land range from $200,000 to over $1 million. Not many entertainment venues can be successful with that upfront cost. We can build a sustainable business here at the site. I would like this course to open in the summer of 2022. I really believe this Creekside will create lasting memories for the community. Please approve the conditional use permit. Thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Apparently I'm over here breaking things. We'll give you, I'll give you a holler if there's any questions for you. It looks like there may be some, I'm not sure. Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yeah, first, thanks for bringing this up. I think this is something that the city desperately needs. I also have two kids, and like many, we're tired of running out to Sherwood, or West Little Rock, Little Rock for anything, keep that money here. It also has the added benefit of bringing families together, keeping the kids something to do, and this is what we need to start building a larger commercial base here. We've shown residential doesn't do it. Something like this here will bring more people here. If it's half as, if the demand for that is half as, even half what I think it will be, that will bring other development here, which will, is exactly what this city needs. So it will help our families and will help our city. So for me, this is a no-brainer.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2021-16.
I do have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-16. I do have some more public comment cards or councilmember buttons. Councilmember Mosley?
I just wanted to say, I think there's a great deal of excitement and anticipation, and so I wish you all very well and look forward to coming and playing. Thank you.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to compliment you for your efforts to try to do this, unlike everybody else here is saying, I feel for, I'd hate to have to be a teenager in Mammell and not, you know, you have to go to Little Rock or somewhere else. And we need more of this kind of stuff for our kids, so.
Right.
Or my grandkids now, or great-grandkids. Okay, but I compliment you, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on the motion to approve Resolution 2021-16? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The next order of business is Resolution 2021-17, requiring Entergy Arkansas to provide records. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2021-17, issuing an order requiring Entergy Arkansas LLC to provide certain records regarding their business and organization as required by Arkansas State Code 14-200-110.
Outstanding, thank you. This is a resolution recommended by the city attorney?
Okay, well, I'm just reading yet another email that I got from Entergy while we've been in the meeting. So I have asked for this information that's in the resolution, which includes information regarding other relocations as well as information regarding any private easement rights that Entergy claims in the area where the Crystal Hill poles are located. So far, as things have progressed from our last meeting, I have pretty much been turned over to outside counsel for Entergy that has refused to provide any information along these lines that I've requested, because he says that it has to go through the discovery process with the Public Service Commission. Nothing's actually been filed with the Public Service Commission yet, although they have said they intend to do so. But this resolution is created because it's very difficult for the mayor and myself to make educated decisions about what the city should or should not pay without information. And I am a little perplexed about why we haven't been able to get that information. I mean, it's, you know, we've asked for, I think what are pretty simple requests, just how has this been handled in other municipalities and similar situations? What testimony has been given regarding relocation by Entergy? You know, what are your claims? Came about when I looked at testimony from Entergy to the Public Service Commission, this was back in 2012, where they were asking for a rate increase to compensate them for $8.4 million that they spent on relocation expenses. So as you can see, I have, I feel like I have reason to be confused, okay, about the position they're taking with us in contrast to relocations they've done in other areas. And if there are differences because of the dates of, you know, that these poles were constructed, that's certainly something I'm willing to talk about, but without any information on when the poles were actually constructed, or what easement rights they claim to have, or how those issues have been handled in other municipalities with the same situation, we're, I feel like we're really limited and we can't make a good decision for the city. So that's why I suggested this resolution, because the state statute does state that the council itself has to order the utility with which we have a franchise to provide those records about their business.
Thank you.
Please ask questions, I'm happy to try to answer. I know that probably wasn't as complete as it could have been.
Councilmember Williams?
I think you did answer my question, because my question was getting the council involved, what do you expect the outcome to be? I mean, we've passed a resolution, and then what? I mean, are we strong-arming them to give us the information we need, or are we just, I mean, just, what will this mean to them?
I could not tell you exactly what it will mean to them. I do know that, you know, the statute itself, 14-200-110, says that when a council issues an order for them to provide certain information about their business, the statute, the state statute says that they are supposed to do that, they're supposed to respond to it.
Okay.
Whether they will abide by the statute, I don't know.
Councilmember Gardner?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17.
I had a motion and several seconds to approve Resolution 2021-17. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a point and let the city attorney tell me if I'm right, but in dealing with a regulated utility like Entergy or CenterPoint or somebody like that, basically jurisdiction comes under the Public Service Commission as opposed to courts, unless I guess there's an appeal of the Public Service Commission ruling at some point. Am I correct on that? We wouldn't be actually proceeding through the courts, we would be proceeding at the Public Service Commission, is that correct?
Typically, that is correct. There is another statute that provides for prosecution of utilities as well. I've not seen where that's been used at all, when they don't provide service and compliance with their franchise agreement. Again, I have not seen that used, but typically I think it would, you know, the statutory scheme is that the utility can be regulated by the municipality, but they have the right to appeal any regulation by the municipality to the Public Service Commission.
Good. All right, thank you. Yes, I'm in favor of this, thank you.
All right. I've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-17. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The next order of business is the first reading of ordinance 1036, establishing rights of way standards. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1036, an ordinance to establish standards and specifications to administer and regulate the right of way in public interest and to provide the issuance and regulation of right-of-way permits.
Thank you. This is an ordinance also recommended by the This is an ordinance also recommended by the city attorney, so I will let her introduce it.
So one of the things that I noted in the testimony that I discussed earlier is that they, Entergy's representative at that time testified that where municipalities have a relocation policy that requires that they relocate in, for public projects like this, that they did, that they would abide by it. And he says, to quote him, "Similarly, Energy Arkansas LLC must adhere to the same type of relocation activities and incurred costs for highway, road, street, bridge, or drainage rebuilds initiated by counties or municipalities." And the commission asked, is any part of these requirements optional? And at that time, he said, no. So I'd started looking to see what, what policies other municipalities had, and I noticed that Fayetteville, Little Rock, Cabot, they did have some type of relocation policy anytime a utility was located in their right-of-way, and they did require, unless, some, some of them made exceptions for if the utility had a private easement right, that they would pay relocation costs in that case, that, all based on the Arkansas, how the Department of Transportation's policy for the state, basically similar to what they require as to when relocation costs are reimbursed to the utility or not. And so in looking at all that, this is modeled after the City of Cabot passed an ordinance very, very similar to this in 2019. And I spoke to the, to the Cabot City Attorney, who was not the city attorney at that time, but he became the city attorney shortly thereafter, later, I believe, in 2019. And he said that they had, as far as he knew, that Entergy had never objected to it, and they hadn't had any issues with it in Cabot. Now, after I've made their council aware of it, for us, you know, I have an email saying that they don't believe it's legal, and they intend to challenge it, and they, if we do pass it, want to end any negotiations on going ahead and moving the poles while this is being resolved. So they've taken a very different approach with us than they have apparently with Cabot. And I don't know all of the negotiations, negotiations, of course, that went on in that city, but I, I do think it's important that we have some uniform standards for utilities that are, are using our right-of-way, and that we need, you know, a uniform permitting process and just overall standards for that. And so that is the reason that I suggested adopting an ordinance like this. Of course, you know, this is just first reading, but.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Madam City Attorney, how does this affect existing franchise agreements that we have with utility providers? If, if this were passed, does it, does it retroactively affect any previous agreement that's been signed? Would, would the new rules be applied to those franchise agreements going forward? How, how would that work?
It's my understanding that the, under the state statutes, once we create any policy like this to regulate a utility that we have a franchise agreement, we have a certain amount of time to just serve it on, on them, and then they can challenge it with the Public Service Commission. They have 20 days after they're served to, to put forth that challenge. So, you know, they would still have the opportunity to do that, you know, and they might all choose to challenge it for us, even if none of them did for Cabot. And, but that's my understanding of the city's ability to, to make rules as it pertains to their right, the use of their right-of-way.
Is there any additional discussion? I wanted to say really quickly, so after the last resolution, I was very encouraged by Entergy reaching out. We've had multiple meetings with them. It looked like we had come up with a, excuse me, it looked like we'd come up with a way to begin to move this project forward while we still debated, discussed, or argued over who was going to fund that. And we had worked out, we were working on coming to an agreement where the, the project could begin and the city would agree to say, if the Public Service Commission says that we were supposed to be the ones to pay for it, we'll pay for it. And vice versa, if it says that Entergy was supposed to be the ones to pay for it, they'd pay for it. But in the meantime, the project could proceed with a sort of contract and agreement that that could go forward. We've also talked to a few different departments and entity, like Entergy gets really big and there's some compartmentalization. I've been very encouraged by some of our discussions with different folks about how we can move forward. We've been in a lot of contact with them. I was on the phone with an individual two minutes before the council meeting. It looks like we might not have an agreement anymore, but we did, an hour and five minutes ago, it looked like we had one. But anyways, I'm, I'm glancing at this very long email we've just received, so I just wanted to share that. I'm still hopeful that we can find a way to move the project forward. I got a call today from a resident that lives in that area, very concerned about the safety of, of that road, specifically as they're having to back out onto the road and, and concern over vehicles traveling. Apparently, we'll have to talk to the chief of police. Apparently, one of the roads is down to one lane, one way. Apparently, there's some folks who, who still try and treat it as two ways, so we're occasionally getting cars having to pull off the side of the road. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that Entergy will help recognize the situation we're in and help us move forward with the project while we can continue to argue over the, the financial liability of the relocation. But with that, if there's no further discussion, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting. All right. We will move on to the next item of business, which is results from the Traffic and Parking Committee meeting. Last week, Ward One held a Traffic and Parking Committee meeting. Just as a reminder for those that aren't very familiar, the Traffic and Parking Committee is comprised of the mayor, the chief of police, and the director of Public Works, as well as both council members representing the ward in which the action, or proposed action is going to take place. And this was Ward One. There was, we received some communications from several of the POAs in that area that they wanted to add a bike pedestrian lane onto Riverland. The committee met and unanimously approved the installation of a bike lane on Riverland. And before you get too concerned by installation of a bike and pedestrian lane, we mean something very similar to what you see on Arnold Palmer or Country Club Parkway, that is the striping down the road. The city has budgeted this year money to handle the striping, so there's no additional budget amendments that'll be needed. I'm getting all choked up over a bike lane. So with that, if there's, and I'm, and we're required to notify the council of that decision. So that's that. If there's no, does Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, did we, we agreed to do the lane from on the far side of the hill down toward the river all the way to Mammell Boulevard? Is that correct?
Correct, with the exception of, there was one block at the end closest to the river where the road narrows, and so there was a discussion about maybe having to go down to just a bike lane on one side, and that'll be based on the width. But yes, it'll go from that, that first street up all the way down to Mammell Boulevard, and it'll tie in quite nicely with the, the path that's there.
Sounds good.
From Turtle Creek Drive on down towards the river.
Pardon me?
It was Turtle Creek Drive is where it narrows down.
Yeah.
And we had the same situation on Arnold Palmer, where it's wider until you get down to Barber, and then it gets narrower there, too. So we drop it from two pedestrian lanes down to one for that section.
Gotcha, yes. And the goal is to get two if we can safely, but we don't want to impede road traffic there. All right, if there's nothing further, we will move on to the next item of business. All right. The next item of business is managed services technology. This year, the city's contract was up for, for IT services was up. We have money in the budget to, what we're trying to move from is a, a current plan that provides a certain amount of time per month, per week, that can be used and transferred to a more full-service IT. We have the money in this year's budget to, to handle that, but before we go forward with that, I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention, because it does come with a cost increase that is, that is not just a standard small cost increase. Currently, we're looking at increasing the IT services by an amount that comes to approximately $70,000 for next year. And where's my other number? Yeah, so it'd come to about that, give or take. It's based on the, it, it, it's a change from a set amount of time to a, you know, full service, and it, the, the cost is based on PCs, servers, you know, the actual equipment we have here. One of the biggest issues that we've had internally is making sure that as we grow as a city and become more technologically advanced, that we have the support infrastructure to be able to handle the increase in IT needs. If you think about it, even these days, we've got police officers with body cameras, multiple cameras in their cars, laptops in their cars, all of these interfacing together to wirelessly transmit to the police department. They've got their servers down there. We've got all of city hall staff on servers, even Public Works crew is using computers for work orders, and it's, what's that?
Senior center.
Senior center. Virtually every department is using them and using them at an increased level of dependency. I remember, I remember talking with a, a group of employees when I was running for this office, so what is the biggest thing your department is facing? And there was a couple of things, but toward the top of that list was IT services. It was some of the firefighters, they, of course, work one day and are off two days. Under our former way that we addressed it, it was a set day for a set amount of hours. Well, if you're working every third day, that meant that every third day, someone, every third week, someone would be there at the same day and time that you were, if they weren't busy somewhere else. So anyways, I, there's, I'm happy to talk about that. City clerk knows that you could probably talk to any department head who, whose eyes are all lighting up as I start talking about in, increase in IT services. It's even brought in the chief of police. And there's, there's no, there's no one department that this affects. It affects everybody. Ultimately, I think what is needed is an IT department of maybe one full-time and one part-time person, plus some managed services through someone else. I don't think we're there yet. I think that we're just trying to increase from where we're at. Before I entered into any agreement that would make it so that when we come time to budget, we're discussing increased fees that is sort of above your standard, you know, increases, I figured I'd bring it to y'all and get your input. So the floor is open. If anyone has any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Gardner?
I'll just ask this, why do you think this package is better than going to our own department at this time? Just to allow us to grow a little bit better and?
Several, several reasons. One is when, when you go with a company, you're getting a full breadth of knowledge. If you get one person, and the reason you can almost never go to a full IT department with one person is that person's going to be sick, that person's going to take vacation, that person might quit or need to be quitted. And having just, having just one person with that amount of power, lack of transition, we think that we're still better off with managed services. We're just looking for something more full-service. It, it so happens that we're looking at a different company, but even when we went back to that company that we've, that we used to be with, or currently are, and had discussions with them, they strongly recommended shifting from the old model, the way we used to do it, to a more full-service contract, that, you know, full service, service, I, is a weird way to put it. But so, that, that addresses that question. Yeah.
Mayor, and keep in mind, too, we are managed servicing all of our departments. At first, we didn't have any support at animal services because there was no need. Public Works is more sophisticated, so they're having more needs. There's cameras in their vans, and also this center on the lake, so everyone is, I'm happy to say that Mammell is keeping up with the trends, and we, we just need the support, and what we had prior does not match our growth. And I anticipated this prior to COVID, and since COVID, it's even more important that we plan for the future.
Thank you. No money today, and we did, we, we won't need additional money for this year. They're sort of taking a, a loss leader for the remainder of this year, because I was adamant about not wanting to come in and ask for more money this year. But nonetheless, before I agreed to that, I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of it and didn't have any heartburn, or wouldn't say, come budget session, why, why didn't we know about this, or those sort of things? So that's what the purpose of this is right here. All right. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is mayor's comments. A couple of things to hit. The first thing is, we had a bid opening today for the reconstruction of the parking lot. And when I say bid opening, we only had one bid, and that bid came in more than three times higher than the engineer's estimates. So if anyone's asking about the parking lot, we will not be doing that anytime in the very short term. We'll probably rebid it, reach out to some of the interested contractors to determine why they didn't even submit bids. Is it too much work? Was it that bids were accepted the day after a three-day weekend? Is, were the plans unclear? What is it that we can do? Pending that feedback, we may go back and, and try and figure out what to do with the parking lot. Next item, Fourth Fest, I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec especially, they really busted their rear end and do every year. It goes largely unnoticed. Any event of that magnitude requires a lot of prior planning, mowing, and it's, it's a testament that, that we just don't get many complaints, or you don't see things that are wrong. And oftentimes, what crosses my path are the complaints or the things that go wrong. And so just a shout out to you and your guys, Philip. Thank you for the job you do. Also, while we're talking about Fourth Fest, thanks to the police department and fire department for having the place well-staffed while we're out there. I wanted to mention the Splashpad. If you haven't got a chance to go out there, take your kids, take your grandkids, take your nephews, nieces, go out there. It's a lot of fun. The, it's a very different climate than a pool. You'll, you'll notice a lot of, and I know this because I had my wife drop me and my boys off, and she had to run an errand, and we were there for a very long time. It seems like the amount of, of people tend to come for 20, 30 minutes, something more like you'd see at a playground, and it was just nonstop busy and being used. Look forward to seeing how long that goes, if this is going to grow or shrink after it's new. It's still novel, but it was nice for me to just sit by the gate, make sure the kids didn't run out the gate, and you guys go do what you're going to do. So take a look at that. Also, wanted to point out, if you haven't already, take a look at the sales tax reports in the FYI section, specifically of note, and this is not indicative just of Mammell. I saw similar numbers from Conway released a little while back. City sales tax, that the 1% sales tax was up $36,000 over the 20, 20 numbers, and $129,000 over the 2019 numbers. The county sales tax was up $98,000, and this is just for the month of April. County sales taxes was up $98,000 over 2020 and $105,000 over 2019. And I point that out, I, I saw a con- And I point that out, I, I saw Conway last month release numbers showing they had a big tax increase, collection increase, which is hopeful that we're not going to have someone come back later and say we have to return that to them. But that concludes mayor's comments. With that, we'll move on to council member comments. Councilmember Tierney?
Can you give me an update on what the status is of looking into putting a light at Odom and Club Manor?
There is no status update on that.
All right, I thought we were doing like a survey to decide, you over there by Kroger or my descent?
Yeah, I know where it, yes. So the last that we left off was, we received the report from the city engineer, it was presented to the city council with the various different options there.
Okay. So we just need to bring up that, those options, try to discuss what we should do on it then, right?
If you'd like to, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So one of the things we, we currently have is a case study of bike ped and looking at the street of Club Manor from Odom to Millwood. And we've got consultants looking at that for some general planning that we expect to be presented to the council and proposals made. I've asked them to glance at that intersection and given them kind of what we have at it as well. There's been, for those that don't know, we, we of course engineered, paid for a roundabout design that's fully designed and ready to bid out, though if bids are coming in like the ones for the parking lot today, I don't recommend doing that anytime super soon. The council postponed that. There's been discussions about adding a traffic light. One of the big holdups was not wanting to put a traffic light in while the adaptive system was being installed all along the boulevard. That is all now fully installed. I do have an email from one of the consultants, I believe, today or yesterday that I haven't got to, but that project is all but completed. And then there was also discussions about closing off Club Manor to through traffic, closing off Odom to through traffic, or, so you couldn't cross Odom all the way. In other words, whether you, when you're coming up to Odom on Club Manor from either direction, it would be a right only, and then you go up and do a U-turn and come back around. But what typically happens is someone on the council asks the status, and I say, it's up, what do y'all want to do with it? And we don't resolve anything, and then it pops back up in a couple of months, and someone asks what's going on with it. Right now, there's nothing going on with it. And I'm interested and eager to hear recommendations.
Have, have we gotten an estimate of what it would cost to put in a traffic light?
No, I can get one.
All right, great.
I think one of the problems with the traffic signal there is backing up traffic down Maumell Boulevard because it's not very far from that intersection to the Boulevard.
But I thought the adaptive system would kind of help with that.
The adaptive system is not working the way it was sold to us. Because I was a driving force behind getting that thing, and it's not doing its job.
Well, you would have, so that is a concern, is you, you would have to link the lights to be mindful of one another. And with the, the current adaptive system, you can make changes just on a computer, right? Like you don't have to go out and have the engineers on site. And of course, the, the, the engineers for the lights is the North of Rock, city engineers, who's been very responsive every time we've reached out to them. And so while it's not us doing it, they've been very responsive and helpful so far.
I just had a comment on that. Even, even if we do not do anything that's an expensive project, the, if you're coming out of the neighborhood on Club Manor and trying to go across, most of the time, I turn right, and then I take that little lane and do a U-turn and come back and go on over. It causes a lot less adrenaline to flow. And, and there's a, if you're trying to go the other way, there's no little turnaround, but that median over there on the, on the, to the right would, would work well, I think, with just another little cut-through there, and that would probably be a low-cost thing if, might even be in something we could put in the budget, but that would at least create that.
I mean, there's Masters Place, that's a block of, of course, I'm measuring a block based on where it is, so it's always going to be one block. But a, a Masters Place, which isn't far, has the U-turn that I've seen some folks use.
Yeah, but there's, there's also, there's already a little lane, if you're turning left from the neighborhood onto Odom, there's already that little entrance lane, so that would, that would serve to be the, the lane to go into the little turnaround, so anyway.
Pardon me, say that again? The, the lane, if you're coming?
The, the, if you're, if you're coming across from, from the neighborhood, trying to cut across Odom, if you're wanting to turn left, there's, there's actually a, a lane to receive you when you turn left there. Most people don't even notice that. But it could be used for people wanting to turn right, you could go into that lane and then do your U-turn. So it, it's actually would, is better suited than the other direction, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if people are understanding what I'm saying, but anyway, it's an option that would be probably very low-cost, just to, if we can't decide on anything else and we don't have the money or whatever.
Gotcha. I may, I may call you up and ask what you're saying once I've got it in front of me.
Yeah, we can drive down, I'll meet you down there if you want.
Councilmember Williams?
So if we make these right turns instead of crossing over to the Boulevard, and we have increased traffic, say like coming from Club Manor and you're turning right, you're going to want to go down and do a U-turn at Masters Place. You've got that pedestrian crosswalk right there that goes from the, from Lake Willistine Park over to the, going all into Club Manor, into the country club there. So I would like to see a pedestrian light there, so, because I have had to slam on my brakes before, I will be, full disclosure, scared I'm going to kill somebody there because I forget that that crosswalk is there, and it's pretty busy. People going from the lake over to home or wherever to get on the blacktop over there. But I would like to see a light where, I don't know what you call them, but they, that you, you hit the button and it, and it makes, it stops traffic until they can get across. So I think, Mayor, you and I have spoken about that before, and that was going to be part of the, the, when they were looking into the bike lane, that, and he would ask them to look at that, maybe check that out and see if that would be something we could do as well.
And that's part of the, the, so it's a, it's a big chain catch-22 almost, where everything's contingent upon the neck. So one of the issues is trying to recognize how much money we have in the street spot, street fund that's, that can be used, and how much we should hold on to simply for ongoing maintenance. So we have a pavement preservation program going on. We've recently, last week maybe, received the initial report back on the status of the roads, and it is every road was driven, every stretch of road was driven, indexed electronically in, in computer format to hit potholes, to rank the roads, you know, in, in five different rankings. And then we've got folks looking at prioritizing the different roads with a suggested road condition with a, with, so, anyway, so, long story short, we're trying, we're trying to figure out how much money we have there that we need to hold on to for long-term street maintenance, and that's just ongoing repairs of the streets, and then how much money is excess that should be spent in some productive way? And then if it's to be spent in some productive way, and this will all involve the council once we get that information, what is one of the ways that that could be spent to best better the community? One of the possible scenarios is Club Manor improvements that change those dynamics and include that interchange of Odom and Club Manor. That may all be for naught if we need all the money to fix potholes in two years, but is that a, a long roundabout of, so, the pavement preservation program is drawing to an end the, the Club Manor corridor, which is designed to be a bike ped plan to tie into the regional bike ped system where we anticipate Metro Plan's bike regional connector between Little Rock and Conway to go down Maumell Boulevard with the goal of hopefully peeling some people off the Boulevard and put them in our commercial district and the recreational amenities at Lake Willistine, et cetera.
So, a light there at that crosswalk?
Yeah, no, well, so, what about it?
I mean.
Right, so if we, if, if, if the question is?
Is that part of the, is that part of the plan?
Well, they are looking at that intersection.
Would we move the crosswalk if they, if they decide, decide to take the bike path all up into other places? Would we just remove that crosswalk altogether?
No, you, all the plans or anything that would happen has to address that intersection if the idea is that that's where people are coming across. Now, you take a scenario where we don't have access street funds, we need to save that money for ongoing maintenance, or you take a scenario whereby we do agree that we have additional funds in the street fund that really shouldn't be just sitting there gathering dust, and a different project is chosen other than that, is when I think you make a determination to go with a less-than-ideal entryway there. With, and I say less-than-ideal, that might just be a, a crosswalk that has the, either you push the button and you can have the, the lights in the street built in, or just the flashing light on the side of the road. There's a, a ton of different ways to handle that, yeah.
We need something there then, honestly.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
And probably at all the crosswalks on Odom because speeding is a problem.
Yeah, there are quite a few crosswalks, but this is the busiest one, I believe, that I, this is the one I've, I've been afraid of most.
Seems an air mission supposed to bloom out most well.
Gotcha, yeah, so?
Yeah, that one too, that was busy too.
So to add it, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, I was just going to, I, I agree with you, that's, that's the number one scariest crosswalk in Maumell there. I had one constituent that was in Hot Springs, and apparently when you go down Bath House Road, there's all these crosswalks, and there, there is a deal where you can push a, a button, and a yellow light starts flashing, and then people can feel safe to walk across, and it attracts attention of the cars, and I don't know how expensive it was. I may have, I may have emailed that to you, I'm not sure.
There's, there's multiple varieties. So if you just have like a standalone solar unit where you push the button and it flashes the light right there on the pole?
Yeah.
Those are really affordable. If you're looking at the ones where you push a button or you walk between two posts and it's motion-activated, and then the lights are flashing in the road, so you're cutting into the road, and then you're putting almost, they look like reflective, those little reflective boxes that you see in the streets, but instead of being reflective, they flash yellow all across the street. Obviously not quite as cheap.
Sounds like, sounds like a, a lot of options there, but there was one other thing I noticed. I was down in the Kavanaugh area, the lower Kavanaugh, where the Afterthought used to be, if you remember where that was. There's some crosswalks that go across there, and they've just got some, some, just signs that stick up in the street, in the middle of the street and on either end, and it signals to the drivers that that's a crosswalk. So if people do start walking across there, at least they, they, they're aware that that's a crosswalk, and it's a very cheap thing. I think it's just screwed down into the ground, into the street. So anyway, that would be a low-cost thing.
Well, I think that, that particular area, the speed limit is very low.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, you've got people blasting through, I mean, we've got probably a low, what is it, 45 there?
Yeah.
35? I mean, 55, it's 35.
How fast do you drive, customer?
I, I, I've watched the speed limit.
Fast enough to have to slam on your brakes when you see someone.
But still, I mean, no matter how slow you're going, if somebody just barrels out there and you don't realize there is a crosswalk there, this, you know, you're going to, you're going to blast somebody.
We had a bicycle get hit about three to four weeks ago at the intersection, that lady slowed down to stop to let him cross, or whipped around her.
And that's happened to me too. I've stopped and people have just kept going, yeah. It's dangerous.
That's all I've got on that subject.
That's all I got.
Was there any additional council member comments?
I've got one or two.
Councilmember Mosley?
Number one, I wanted to compliment, I think it was Alderman Sanders that came up with the idea of the pavilion at Lake Willistine. That thing is busy every time I'm there. It seems to be the most-used facility in, in Maumell, I think. I think that was a good idea, and I don't think it costs us a whole lot of money, 15,000 or something like that. Anyway, for the, for the buck, I think everybody's pretty happy with that. Another thing, I, I had a constituent call the other day and said there's satellite dishes in the front yards in Riverland, and I thought, I don't, I've never seen that. I actually went driving through there today and actually saw three of them in that little circle area, I can't come up with the name right now, but there's, there's three of them in the front yard, but the, our, our city code does not prohibit that, so, and apparently it's because the FCC has said you cannot regulate where you put them as long as the people need the service or something. So anyway, I'm, I'm going to kind of look into that just a little bit and see if there's any way we can say if, if that's the only place that you can get a signal or something, but I'm not sure I want to do anything based on three, and I wanted to mention that in case other people have noticed satellite dishes in front yards and things, but, so if you, you do have some, holler at me or let me know at a council meeting. Thanks.
Alderman Mosley, I, I got that same, I got the same message.
Oh, same guy, okay.
So my darling bride and I jumped in the car, and she drove me over there, and I saw the three you're talking about, but I did notice that all of those lots had a lot of trees on them.
The back, yeah.
Now, there's at least one that I saw where it could have been put on the roof, so.
Yeah.
But trees are a real problem for those three.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Mosley?
No, sir, I'm done, thank you.
Outstanding. Anyone else, council member comments? All right, we will move on to city attorney comments.
I did just want to make the council aware, I know we've had ongoing litigation for a number of years, the Corvo versus the City of Maumell, that is set for trial the week of July 27th. There's a, schedule's been commenced for preparation the week before, so that will be coming up. Corvo versus the City of Maumell, it's a wage and hour case.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk?
No comments.
If that's the case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We've got a motion, second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.